...storage for the garbage storage for the Thai boys. So now the Thai boys and piece of art has no garbage service.
Oh, the barrels in the front.
I caught him the other morning doing it, yeah. Somehow they're going to be able to tie the business license, the garbage company records together that show that you subscribe to service. Here, we're at, is everybody ready, or?
You're at all by yourself, I'm Ryan. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'll call the regular meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. The first item of business will be a roll call.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Chairperson Gray?
Here. First thing I have before we get into the agenda items is an announcement. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communication, cable TV Channel 8, and is being recorded to be replayed at 12 noon on Saturday following the meeting on community television of Santa Cruz, Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.ciacapitola.ca.us. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman. As a reminder for the audience here, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting, and we ask that anyone that comes to the podium to speak, please put your, write your name down on the sheet next to the podium so that we can spell your name correctly in the minutes. With those announcements, we'll go on to the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our staff tonight, on my right, the audience's left, is our senior planner, Ryan Bain, and on my left, your right, the audience's right, is minute clerk Danielle Uheriot. The first item of business tonight is item two, which is our additions and additions to the agenda, and for any of you in the audience or at home that were coming down for these two items, I will mention to you that four C, the consent item four C, has been continued indefinitely, and five D, which is public hearing five, has also been continued indefinitely. I know it says on the agenda that it's put over to November the first, but I've been told to say indefinitely. With that-
Item B too, Ryan.
Huh?
Item B under public hearings two.
Item B. I missed one?
Yeah.
Five B.
Five B. Okay, I'm sorry. And five B is continued to November first. My, I didn't see that at the bottom page. Thanks Mick for that. This is the time for public comments. This is for, a time for members of the audience to come forward and address the commission on items that are not on our agenda but are within our purview. Is there anyone wishing to come before the planning commission tonight to speak to an item that's not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on to commission comments. I understand Commissioner Smith has a comment.
Yes, I do have a comment, and it's a, it's a comment, it's thank you really, Ryan, for looking into the situation where one of our restaurants down in the Esplanade has put an outdoor grill out on their patio, and I know it's taking a lot of time for you digging around trying to find the, the right documentation, but I really do believe that as Capitola continues to encourage mixed use developments, that we have specific language about outdoor cooking, and that it did get approved like we do for outdoor seating at a restaurant, that it get approved affirmatively instead of being silent. So I know it's going to take some time, but I really do appreciate it.
You're welcome. I hope to have something early next week.
Okay. Is there any other commission comments? Are there any staff comments tonight?
Nope.
Seeing no staff comments. The first, next item then is the approval of the minutes of September 6th. I will note on page four, under the Loma item, I am credited with suggesting that construction hours in Capitola should start at 6:30 in the AM, and boy, if I said that, that was a real mistake. I'm sure that I am aware that normally construction hours in Capitola start at 7:30 and end at 6:00, only because my neighbor was told that by the building official, but the actual item with regards to conditions on the next page does have what the council decide, the planning commission decided that night, and that is 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. It also credits Commissioner Ortiz, who is not here, with concurring on that 6:30 AM starting time, so I think both of those are mistakes. Anyone else? Is there a motion to prove the minutes as corrected?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. We're now into the consent agenda, and we have one, two consent items. One is 809 Bay Avenue, the other one being 816 Bay Avenue, and as I mentioned earlier, 1066 41st First is continued indefinitely. Is there any member of the audience or any member of the commission desirous of pulling either the two items?
I don't think I need to pull it, but I'd just like clarification on the 809 Bay that we're approving the signs already there and not two additional signs.
Correct. Those are signs that are already existing. No additional signs.
Okay, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item B because, I'll tell you my concern, and I don't, I think we have to pull it in order to do it. My concern is not with the, the application at all for the canopy for the spa. My concern is that the conditions for approval do not include something that went on in the conversation between staff and the applicant, and that has to do with the amplification and the noise that could be created in the location of the pool and this new canopied section. As you're aware, the topography there is pretty steep behind the pool, but we have a large number of senior apartments, and that noise, if it were generated by amplified music or anything of that nature with these exercise classes, would carry right up into that area, and I'd just like to see a condition imposed, and the applicant has already agreed to it, that no amplified music will occur outside in the pool or cabana area.
I have no problem adding that. I think that would be fine. As you mentioned, I think the applicant didn't have any issues with that.
Yeah, nothing's changing. We've been doing the water aerobics there for, maybe it's to us for 15 years. There's no additional amplification.
Okay. I'd just like to see it as a written condition so that everybody's on record that, you know, that's what it is.
Do we need a separate motion for that one?
If everybody, if we can get a consensus that everybody agrees, maybe we could just ask staff to add it.
His letter says that they currently use music for the water aerobics and zumba classes. Is that something you're trying to avoid?
Maybe we, maybe we, well, let's just pull it and talk about it. Okay.
Okay.
So that we have one item, we have a motion, and we have a second. I know that, because we had it on both of them. The one item will be 809 Bay Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now we'll go on to 816 Bay Avenue, Unit D, which is the spa on Bay Avenue behind Dairy Queen. Staff want to give a few comments? Thanks for bringing that up, Ed.
So what the, what the applicant is requesting is a design permit to construct an accessory canopy structure as part of an existing health club, which is Total Fitness. Here's the aerial, taking a look at the location, so you can see the pool and the open area next to the pool. So next to the pool there is where they have an existing deck, and they're proposing a canopy over, over that deck. Here's kind of, here's a rendering of that. It's a forty, basically a forty by twenty-four structure. It stands about eighteen feet, four inches in height. It's constructed of wood and clad metal posts and a standing seam metal roof. It meets all the development standards of the CC zoning, including setbacks, height, and mott coverage. And that's about it.
That is it. It's an interesting visual. It looks like a diving board.
Like it's on a platform.
Yeah. Do you have a can have any comments? My only concern is to get the ambient level of the music as what you have today and not increase upon that. I want to make myself clear. I'm not trying to do yen in any fashion here.
Should I sign in here?
Yes. Please.
Yeah, so there'd be no change in the amplification. We've been teaching the water aerobics classes outside for three years now, and on the deck also for over a year, so there'd be no changes in any kind of music. We're not putting in a big stereo system or anything that's going to amplify music, and our thoughts, if anything, the canopy would make things quieter, if anything, than louder.
Okay. Thank you for that. And you have no really objections that if we then put in a condition that measured the ambient noise level during one of these events now, and then we, after you've got the canopy in and the rest, or we came back and said, it's got to fall within a certain range?
Yeah, that would be fine. So they do use like music for the water aerobics classes that they've been teaching.
I understand what you said, and what we would do is take, you know, during one of those normal classes, some readings out there to make sure what, what we've got, and just hope that you don't get what I always call an over enthusiastic aerobics instructor as you get in some of the movies, and that is trying to be, you know, twenty octaves on a micro, microphone higher than the ambient music, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Anyone else in the audience, or anyone, yes, young lady behind you there, I'm sorry. Come on, I don't know.
Hello, my name is Anna Gotti. I am a, although I am the landlord where 816 Bay Avenue is, I do live right, right behind it, and so far the music level at the pool is not a problem where I'm at, and again, I am right next door to those same apartments that you are referring to.
You're just slightly farther towards the street, isn't it?
Yes, but there, there's a few more in between there as well, but yes, it has not been a problem all these years. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And Chairperson Gray, just, just to add, I went by the, the club at one point, and while they were actually having the pool-
Water.
Water aerobics, thank you. And basically, it was a small boombox near the pool facing the street, and it really wasn't very loud, but I completely understand your, your concern. I think adding a condition, just to make sure it doesn't get out of control is appropriate.
Okay, and I have no words for the condition. I just leave it to staff to add that condition. That's where I'm coming from. No, no hardship on the applicant at all. Is there any other comments from the staff? Is there a motion on this item?
I'd move with the proposed condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments? Anyone in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you and good luck.
Thanks, I do.
Okay. We're on to public hearings, and public hearing A tonight is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and let me tell you how public hearings in Capitola go. The staff will make a presentation, the public will have their discussion on that presentation, planning commission will make their comments, and at the close of the public portion, the planning commission will make a decision, not decision, continue the item, whatever the planning commission chooses to do. So first, we will have a staff presentation. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Commissioner. Steve Justburg, Public Works Director. The item before you tonight is a local hazard mitigation plan. It is a plan that is being developed to identify critical infrastructure and structures and tie them together with potential hazards so that we can identify mitigation plans to protect that infrastructure and critical facilities during earthquakes, floods, any of the hazards that we've identified in the plan. Ultimately, this plan will go before the city council, and then once we will submit it to FEMA, and then upon approval by FEMA, the object is, will be eligible for federal grants at that point to implement the, any mitigation of these structures through this planning. So it's kind of a funding, a initial step for a funding plan. We've gone through, we've worked in consultation with quite a few of the local utility companies and other regulatory agencies. I don't want to get into much detail, we do have a presentation for you. I would like to add that this is not the final version. The final version will include any comments that the planning commission has, anybody from the public has. We have advertised it and put it out for a thirty day comment period. We received no comment to date on the plan, so we will be wrapping up these final comments, and also going to include, the museum staff has notified us that we need to do some photo credits in the appendix A, which is kind of the history of disasters in Capitola, so we will be including the photo credits there, and we'll also be including recognition of Carolyn Swift, who put that together for us. So we know those will be in the final version that aren't in this draft version, and with that, I'd like to introduce Bill Weisman with RBF Consulting, who is the lead consultant on putting this plan together. Bill has a short presentation for you.
Good evening, commissioners. We're losing, oh no, he's just going to get some air.
Get some air.
Good. Good evening. Phil Weisman, RBF Consulting. So we've been working, I think about probably eight months, although not continually, to put this together, and I'm just going to give you a quick overview, probably about fifteen or twenty slides, give you an idea how the document's organized and what the process was, and where we're going to go from there. So we all know and are very familiar with the storm events and what can happen, not just storm events, but lots of other hazards as they relate to Capitola and the effect that they can have. So these are some shock photos. So we get effects both from the ocean, as well as particularly SoCal Creek. It's a forty square mile watershed, so a lot of water comes down, and it all comes right through Stockton and under Stockton Bridge. So there's a lot of issues just associated with, with the ocean and, and water coming to the ocean, and we know from the storm last year, last March, what can happen and the effects that it has on facilities and private property, et cetera. So the city, then, within the context that Steve was talking about with FEMA, is if you have a local hazard mitigation plan, and the county has one, but each jurisdiction has to have one, and I think the key to this is, when you have this, then you're able to get federal dollars through FEMA for future things. So that's really the linch plan, linchpin for putting this together, is it enables the city to go out and get some money to, to offset some of these risks. And so the idea is have a plan in place so that they know where the funding is going. So hazard is basically, hazard mitigation is to look at the risks, and I'll go, I'll describe to you what those different risk factors or risk profiles are. The key then is that second paragraph, which I'll read to you, local hazard mitigation plan, it forms a foundation for the community's long-term strategy to reduce the risk from hazards and create a framework for risk-based decision-making to reduce damages to lives, property, and the economy for future disasters. So it's really a framework document, it's not, how are we going to solve it, but it's more at the policy level, and then some prioritization, high, medium, low, et cetera, for, for how to implement the plan. From the context of how it's organized, there's essentially five main components to it. There's the community profile, which kind of looks at existing conditions, some of that we drew from our current work on doing the general plan background reports. There's the hazard profiles, which I'm going to get into. My key of the presentation's going to be on the second, third, and fourth bullets, which is the profiles. The risk assessment, which is, looks at which facilities are vulnerable to those hazards, and then fourthly, how are you going to mitigate those? And then the last part is kind of the longevity of the plan as far as updating and maintaining the plan, which I won't get into. So there was quite a bit of process meeting with an advisory committee that was formed, and the purpose is, is that Capitola in and of itself doesn't take care of its hazards. It really is, in context, a regional issue in many, for many, from standpoint, from, from a regional standpoint, it has regional implications. And so we talked with a lot of different agencies, central fire, various departments of the county, PG&E, SoCal Creek Water District, et cetera. You can see the list there. And all our meetings were actually held on the back table here, and we had a total of four meetings with this committee, and this was the process that we went through in looking at the hazard profiles, and then the facilities, and then looking at mitigation strategies, and then finally, the fourth meeting was discussing the overall plan and making sure they were all happy with it. Now, one of the key elements is which hazards you look at, and FEMA's got a long list, there's probably about fifteen plus different criteria or hazard types, as you see on the left column, and first thing we did with the committee was to ferret out ones that didn't make a difference, and then, then narrow those down to which ones apply to Capitola in particular, and those include issues like coastal erosion, which you just saw with some of those photos, drought to some extent, earthquake, different soil conditions, flooding, et cetera. And the key here on this one is to look at which ones were particularly rated significant because they would have a higher risk factor associated with them, a risk potential, and so those were, were put together, we scored that with the, with the advisory committee, and from that, that really was then the profiles that we looked at for how we're going to address mitigating those. So this, this will come up again as far as that list and what the actions are associated with, trying to minimize the risk.
I know the answer to this question, but if you go back to that slide, the average person watching at home may not know what a four, two, one, three is.
Right, so what they are is basically, we gave them a probability factor, and that was through consensus of the committee, and so four being higher and one being lower. Is that where you're going?
Yes.
Yeah. So four was the probability of it happening, so for example, coastal erosion bluff failure was given a high of one. And then we looked at, looking at the affected area and the primary and secondary impacts, kind of looks at, in context geographically, for example, coastal erosion happens only at the beach, so it's not something that happens across the whole city, whereas opposed to say earthquake would be something that would obviously affect the entire city. Everyone would feel it. So it's, it's kind of a rating system, and then we give it a scoring.
You know, the reason I, I put that in, obviously, if you lived along a bluff, you would have a major concern.
Yes.
Yet we had an earthquake that was quite large, and we really sustained some damage, but not to the extent that a lot of communities in this area did. And while that's giving a very high risk factor, it really didn't affect as much as the people on the bluff.
Exactly. Yeah. Everyone felt it, but it wasn't as much damage. Yeah. So I'm just going to go through these quickly. These are just graphic representations of each of these risk factors as part of the background analysis. Again, a lot of this was drawn from what we'd done already on the general plan, so these are major earthquake faults. This is a map showing liquefaction potential, which is basically soils that are, I call them soupy soils, so they're just not as good to build on. There's coastal storm and flooding. This is showing both flood plain and coastal, not so much sea level rise, but, but, you know, high tide storm events. This is tsunami inundation, so it's that light blue that you see particularly going into the village and up SoCal Creek and Noble Gulch. This is the sea level ride, rise inundation, so it's showing a degree of, of, over time, and I think this, I can't read the legend on that, I can't remember the timeline, I think this is a fifty and a hundred year inundation areas. And then coastal erosion and landslide. So this, what we've done is essentially mapped these, and then they get overlaid with this, and this is a list of the critical facilities, so it's kind of the interface of where do the hazards exist spatially, and then what are the facilities that could be affected. So this is, this is probably one of the most important, because we came up with this list with all the different agencies and with the city, and it really hits the heart of, you know, if there's a catastrophe or some major disaster, you know, what kind of facilities are going to be exposed. So obviously, City Hall, which also operates as emergency operations facility, the adjacent police station, and across the street, the fire station, emergency shelters, the Stockton Avenue Bridge, the wharf, State Park, transportation roads. We decided to include transportation roads like Park Avenue and Cliff Drive because they're major arterials, police communication facilities, the Noble Gulch storm pipe, which is an obvious issue there, et cetera, pump stations. So these are ones that, you know, if, if those go out, you've got a problem, and this is where funding can be applied to help address these, these issues that are considered of critical need.
I have a quick question. We've had some ocean inundation studies from several years ago, I was wondering, did you incorporate those into this, or did you do this all from scratch again?
Uh, no, we incorporated, no. Not all done at scratch. In fact, there's a recent study that was done just after we did the background on this for the sea level rise, and that part we would incorporate into this. So there's been, yeah, any studies that have been done in the past. A lot of the analysis part, or the, the physical aspects of, of the hazards profiles is, that information's been studied quite a bit. The facilities list was more of a brainstorming that we developed with the group, to make sure we had everything, because we want to make sure anything on the list can get funding, so we didn't want to not put something on the list. Okay, I don't, I don't expect you to read this all, this is just the first page of the hazard mitigation actions, I just want to describe how it works. So with each of those hazard profiles, and for example, this first one there says earthquake, liquefaction, hazard-related actions. So essentially, we, we take each of those categories, identify what an action is, a mitigation action, then the next column over is the responsible department, possible funding sources, target completion date, and the priority. So this is really the guts of it, and says, here's what we want to do for the city, you know, these are our critical facilities within the context of how they might be affected. So there's about a six or eight page table that's in towards the back in chapter four, and this really lays out what, what the strategy is for mitigation, and this, this then ties into your, the funding sources, because you go to this and say, yep, it's on the list, it's a high priority, and then we could get some, you know, potentially get some funding through FEMA. The other component of that is what's called a capabilities assessment, so you've got it identified as to what the risks are and the mitigation actions or policies and their priority, but then the other side of it is, well, who's going to do it, or which entities can do it to, to help in that process. So this table gives you a breakdown of each of the different entities, and the first page here, we've got city council, city administration, public works, police, it goes on with planning, et cetera, and then outside agencies at the county for, let's say, 911 emergency response, et cetera. And then this just basically identifies what abilities they have to support that mitigation, and then what their web address is. Kind of a directory, if you will. So that's the, that's the meat and potatoes of the plan, so tonight we're at the planning commission looking for any comments that you have, and then a recommendation to forward that on to the city council, and that's going to be reviewed next month by council. Then it goes out for the review period, and it goes first to California Emergency Management Act or CAL-EMA. They look at it, and they've got, you know, go through it, there's a checklist that they go through, and then they forward that on to FEMA with a recommendation, they do a quick look at it, and then what will happen is FEMA will send back a letter saying basically that they certify it, and then the last action is the council adopts it. So the council can't adopt it until FEMA's given their okay on it. So we hope to get that done early next year after their review period. So that concludes my presentation. Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I'd like to add one, one quick thing on the facilities that we listed. We didn't include any state facilities. We didn't include the Highway One Bridge over 41st Avenue. We included jurisdictions or local utility companies that would benefit from this plan. The state, they have their own mitigation plans and federal, another federal, the railroad track is a federally mandated or federally controlled facility, so they would get their funding directly. So I just want to make sure, Highway One certainly is a critical facility to Capitola, but we didn't list any state or federal facilities on there. Thank you.
Any questions of the staff?
I have a question. On table 38, the mitigation actions, the priority, low, low priority, what does that really mean? And specifically on item B, continuing to enforce the most current versions- And specifically on Item B, continuing to enforce the most current versions of the building code has a low priority, and I just want to know, what does that mean?
Can you give me a minute? Because I know, I can't remember, I know we had that discussed as far as the prioritization.
Is there, is there any thought, I got a question for you while you're looking. Has there any been, thought been given to sequentially number every page of the report rather than have each section of the report have its own numbering system? Because there's a redundancy there. So if I tell you, look on Page 4, there's three or four Page 4s.
I'm not sure, the document is sequential through to the appendices, so I'm not sure.
I have, at least in mine, in this one here, I have several numbers that are the same.
Okay.
And they simply, because they, and the, if you go to the table of contents, I think you'll also see it.
Okay. Let me look and see.
Maybe I'm wrong, but maybe it's where they place the pages.
Why don't I do that offline with you after, because it isn't set up that way, so I'm not sure what happened.
Okay.
I apologize, I can't answer your question right away on the high, medium, low. It's a prioritization in my, I have to go and find. My recollection was it dealt with years, and I think it was like 1 to 5, 5 to 10, and then 10 plus. So it has to do with timing, but I'm not finding it directly. But that's generally the context of what it means. And then your second point was to a specific.
Yeah, well, so low priority, would low priority be 1 to 5 or?
No, that would be later out. So in other words, it's, or maybe it just wasn't considered important, but we still wanted to have it on the list, so.
Okay. So specific item 1, earthquake, Item B, which is to continue to enforce the most current versions of both the California building code and the California building standards.
Right.
And it has a low priority, and whenever I see enforcement as a low priority, I go, but wait a minute.
Yeah. Well, the reason in that context is that the city's required by state law to be in compliance with those requirements. So it could be from, from the priority standpoint, that it's not going to take a lot of resources and a lot of effort. But I'm giving you conflicting response there as far as timing versus effort. So if you don't mind, let me sit down because I want to give you the straight answer. But needless to say, the enforcement would be required, and it's not like they're saying they wouldn't do it. They have to do it anyhow.
Okay. The only other item that I had a question on is a couple of pages farther down, Item Number C, and I'm not sure, 2C.
What page number? I'm sorry.
Page number 108. And it's the mitigation action is to relocate or elevate critical facilities, and the target completion date is 2015. And I was just wondering if the 2015 is really realistic, if you're talking about moving City Hall and the police station and all of these critical facilities.
Agreed. That's certainly, I mean, I think that's clearly not realistic. So let me, let's go back and we'll talk with Susan and Steve on that.
It's good for getting money to fund it, but I'm just not sure it's a realistic expectation.
Yeah. It could still be a high priority, but maybe a little more realistic here. I agree with you.
I thought it was a great plan, though.
Thank you.
I mean, the whole document is not that difficult to read, and it's got a lot of really good information that, it's a great document.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question of the staff? This is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for members of the public to step forward and ask questions with regards to the plan.
Can we get printed copies of that report?
Staff will answer that.
Well, I'm not going to be staff. Yeah, copies are available. It's posted on the city's website. And if you actually go to the homepage and go down to the lower right, you'll see a link to it, and you can load it as a PDF and go from there.
Can I pick up a printed copy?
If you need a printed copy, I was just going to finish this end. If you need a printed copy, certainly the city can print one for you. I'm not sure what the cost recovery is, but I'm sure it's very reasonable.
Oh, I would like to.
Maybe it'll even be a deal. Yeah, absolutely.
Because I would like to see it.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? And I'm sorry, young lady, I should have made you come back up to the, so you get your pretty face on television. They answered your question. Okay. Anyone else? I'll close the public portion then and bring it back to us. Anyone here want to start off?
I already said my piece.
Well, I enjoyed it. I thought it was very interesting. It's obviously pro forma to get the, qualify as needed. But if it were really something you wanted people to read, it would be nice to have some sort of smaller version, executive summary or something less than 350 pages, but it's not, it's well done, certainly.
It's a great historical summary of all the disasters that have occurred in our general area here. But I did have, I kind of laughed to myself when I said, when you guys said it has to go to FEMA for their approval. I can recall when Ron and I were back in the council, we took our floodplain ordinance to FEMA, and Ron and I actually made a trip to Washington DC to see if we could get some exemptions for the homes along the river. And they took it under advisement. And what they made us do was include some language in our ordinance that allowed for protection of mangrove swamps. So I always thought that was kind of comical. There's not one within 2,000 miles of here. And the only comment I had was, and I don't know if this is what you mentioned, Lynda, because I didn't catch what your comment was, but the target date for replacing City Hall and the police department, yeah, 2015 is a little unrealistic.
Anyone else? I'll be honest with you, I think that the document is long, and I'm very succinct usually. I think it will draw dust on the space, on a shelf after it's approved, and then be pulled out at times when there are emergencies in hope of getting some federal and government funding. I think it's a well-done report. It's very lengthy. I had a little bit of difficulty with, I think the same thing Lynda was mentioning. There's these columns in a lot of the mitigating pages that say low, high, or they're given 1, 2, 3, 4, but there doesn't seem to be an adequate explanation to me as to the reasoning, you know, if we were judging beauty, a 10 is pretty good, you know? But if we had a hazard and you had a 10, it'd be pretty bad the way I'm reading this. And so, you know, I'm just not, I'm sure that FEMA understands it. I'm just not sure that the average person that'd pick it up and read it would totally comprehend.
Okay. Can I give you two quick responses?
Sure.
First, on the length, this is very.
Small.
Bureaucratically driven by what has to be in the plan, because there are people in Sacramento that literally have a checklist, and they go check, check, check if it's in there or not. So we only want to send this to them once. So thus, that's structured the way it is. Very, very structured in the process.
That's why we've got too many jobs in Sacramento, right? We got it.
I wasn't going to say that. I was going to let you say that. And then I apologize because I forgot, it's been a little bit of time since we did the final on this, the draft final, I should say, that went off. On Page 104, on the second paragraph under hazard mitigation, and I'll just give you the understanding of what it is, but I want you to see the language. The prioritization was something that we added to the table because we wanted the committee to have input on what they felt should be the prioritization. So what we did is, we put everything, we put all the mitigation measures up on a board, literally, and they put dots on it, right in here. And they prioritize those as far as, like, however many dots there were. And then we took an arbitrary breaking it down, not arbitrary, but, you know, averaged them out, and took a high, medium, low from that. So the prioritization comes from the LHMP Advisory Committee. So that's, we wanted their input to say, well, what do you guys think from a regional standpoint should be important, you know, higher priority or lesser priority?
And I'm sure that everybody from the water company put water projects as their highest priority, and everybody at other utilities put theirs.
Actually, the group functioned very well together. And they all know each other pretty well, as you can imagine. They just went through this with Santa Cruz County and putting theirs, I think theirs is a 2010 document. So they, you know, they all knew each other, and, you know, everyone got along quite well.
But so it's low priority with regards to what, though?
For the group, they felt that it was either a low priority as far as its importance, as to, you know, how, how much should the city be pursuing that, or the region, as the city working within the region, versus high, like, we need that right away. I think tsunami warning system, I don't know exactly, but, you know, there were things like that that came up where they felt that that would be really important. So it's purely, it purely references what the committee felt was important. So I don't want to draw too much into thinking, you know, what their thinking was.
Okay. Okay.
Is that, I have to call you back. Is that what you were really saying is, we really don't need a prioritization for FEMA or other agencies, it's something that we just did to look at what these local experts felt was a priority?
Absolutely. If the city comes and, you know, you're right on the dust factor, but when it comes to play and you want to relocate City Hall, or there's a major infrastructure thing, Steve can say, guess what, yes FEMA, we have our plan, and here's our grant for $5 million. He'll go, okay. And here's your $6 million, because Steve's going to do a great job writing the grant.
Okay.
I was just going to add, I think the prioritization isn't what we should or shouldn't be doing, because obviously, we're going to enforce all the building codes. That's not going to go away. It's more to identify what are the high elements of this plan that we should be focusing on as we look toward hazard mitigation. Strictly looking at hazard mitigation, like dealing with Noble Gulch Pipeline. That's a high priority that was identified here. You know, making sure everything is earthquake sound is a high priority, but meeting the building codes is something we're going to do regardless, and it not really, for hazard mitigation as it looks at this plan, was not a priority. It doesn't mean it's not going to happen, or it's a lower priority for the city, but in relation to what are the high issues from mitigating future disasters is what this was for.
And it's probably, I, I'm going to say this, it's probably a poor example to use the busted pipeline, the infrastructure, because if you think about the year that it was installed, and how long it lasts without any occurrence, you probably wouldn't give it a high rating.
Right.
But because it's the most recent thing to occur, and we didn't get any money for it, it gets a high rating.
And also, the amount of damage that it caused when it did fail. You know, and we might not have known that if it hadn't failed. And again, I certainly wouldn't estimate it how much damage that was going to cause when it failed, so, certainly, but, you know, some of the other things. Stockton Avenue Bridge has never backed up either with logs, but we know that is a potential to happen, and so I think that got a high priority, too, so.
Probably the most costly event, though, was the storms of, what was it, '82?
Right. Right.
Okay, thank you. What is the pleasure? Shall we just say that we reviewed this? What action do you, does staff want us to do?
We just would like you tonight to pass any comments along that you received from the public or from the commission to the, to the city council. There's no adoption or necessary from the Planning Commission.
I would be, I feel very confident that the discussion we've had will be incorporated in the minutes, so that there's probably going to be ample opportunity for our comments to reach the council. Anybody else feel differently, want to make any motion on this item? Seeing none, that'll be the action on the item. Thanks, Steve, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item, second public hearing has been continued. That's the 500 Pine Street. I think the next one is the one where I leave on. Yes, Mick, you have to take over. And I'll step out.
Well, we'll let you, aren't you guys drawing straws? Have you already done that?
Oh, that, I'm sorry. We do have a problem with 411, maybe I should explain that for the audience at home and for the people in the audience here. 411 Capitola Avenue lies within a certain distance of several of the properties that we as commissioners own. And when that occurs, we have to reclusive ourselves from discussion of that item. However, tonight, we would not have a quorum nor a majority if we did that. So what we do among those that are within this prescribed distance under the law is we draw straws, and it's been the short straw gets to stay and the long straws get to leave. So if the clerk will present the straws to us.
Before we do that, I have a double conflict here.
Oh, boy.
And I don't know if that changes the rule any, both distance and relationship with the property owner, a financial relationship.
Okay. I think you can only reclusive yourself once.
I'm still in a straw. Good try.
Good try.
Going home early.
You get to leave, I think. I got the short straw. I've had that short straw a couple of times now.
Story of your life.
Is that the last item on the agenda?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Well, see you November 1st.
Okay.
You have a knack for those. I'm good at this.
Okay. So I won't turn it over to Mick, I'll just tell you that the next item is 411 Capitola Avenue. It's a design permit for exterior facade changes to an existing mixed-use building. The building is directly across the street from City Hall. Staff will give a report.
Yes, as you mentioned, everyone should be familiar with this building. It's right across the street. It was formerly the City Hall Annex and is now occupied by Fuse Architects. So this is what it's looked like for many years. With Fuse now moving in, the applicants are proposing exterior improvements and wall signs to update the look of the building. The improvements include the addition of steel siding accents on a portion of the first floor elevation, new fixed windows and doors, any door along the right side of the building, and two new wall signs. The steel will be allowed to weather to bring kind of a respatina. And I think you might have an example. Did you bring them by chance?
Grab it.
All right, maybe you want to grab it. Would you guys like to see an example of the steel? Thanks, appreciate that. So here's kind of a rendering of what it will look like. Here's the actual elevations. You can see a new window and door. Here's a floor plan that kind of better shows where exactly the steel siding will go, as well as the door and the window. So the applicant is proposing two new wall signs. One is fronting Capitola Avenue, and the other is along the side of the building, as you can see here, which would be visible from traffic traveling down Capitola Avenue toward the village. The Fuse sign will be cut into the new steel siding with the emblem being backlit with an opaque acrylic. The sign ordinance does require that the size of wall signs be no greater than 1 square foot of sign area for each foot of business frontage. In this case, there's 25 feet of business frontage. The total combined square footage of the signs together is only 7, so it's certainly well within what would be allowed for the sign area. But though the sign does fall within that area, our sign ordinance does state that each business shall permit it only one wall sign. An additional wall sign is permitted, as you know, probably on corners, where you're on the corner of a street, and that, and one would face each side. But while this building is not really located on a street corner, it somewhat acts like a corner in that it jets out and the adjacent property is set back from the street. So it kind of acts as a corner. So it's understandable that the applicants would want to have the signage the way they've set it up. So the city, you know, has generally not supported alterations and exemptions to the sign ordinance, but staff, we would leave it to the Planning Commission to see if a second wall sign would be permissible in this particular case. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission discuss the issue of the sign and determine if the proposed additional sign would be appropriate in this particular case, and if so, we're recommending approval of the application.
Okay. Any questions of staff report? Is the applicant here? Do you wish to make any additional comments?
Give me to give that to.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Dan Gomez. I'm with Fuse Architects, one of the owners. Sorry, I read the report earlier, but I know that the recommendation was also, or just pinpointing that the fact that it was two signs. We kind of have always felt that it's really, I mean, especially because it's kind of like, like Ryan was saying, a corner situation. it's kind of like, like Ryan was saying, a corner situation. In reality, you're seeing, if you come down Capitola Avenue, you completely blow by that sign, especially because typically there's a car parked right in that parking spot, the majority of the day. And usually, it is also one of the community development officers' trucks, which tends to be taller, and it blocks that entire street frontage. So as far as visibility, that sign, or the, our logo being put on this wall is kind of critical to just people and traffic, street traffic. However, if people are coming from the other direction, they would never see that sign. So, and it all, it's all one material, and it wraps the corner. So our, our original discussions with the planning department and building department was that this is really one sign that wraps the corner, and I know that the way it's kind of been presented, it's, it's more treated as two signs. However, we, we honestly felt that, hey, we've got our name on there twice. However, it's a sign that wraps the corner, similar to some other signs we've seen. So we were trying to, I mean, we think it's an addition to the building that'll, that'll add some nice character. It adds professional, in our opinion, all the feedback we've gotten, and even at the Argent Site Committee, I mean, everybody seemed to, seemed to be very favorable of the look and feel of it. And nobody seemed to have a problem, other than they were worried about the direct wording of what is the code, and if it's allowed, so.
Okay.
Well, I have, if, if, we'll have a chance for rebuttal if you have something to say.
You, you get your, I always say, make, make your best presentation, because I tend to cut off rebuttal if it's redundant. So, okay. But you will get an opportunity if we have some comments, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and bring it back here. I have just a couple of questions of staff, and believe it or not, this is one time that I don't have a great deal of difficulty with a sign wrapping, even though it's two signs. I disagree with you there. But my concern is that the new door, and the windows on the north side, if the office next door were to be demolished today and rebuilt, they would be able to build exactly like this, and that would be a very narrow entryway. How much property is there between the building and the next-door property owner? In other words, has anybody established the-
You can see it here on the plan.
It's, yeah, I would say I-
I couldn't find the actual measurements.
I think is it, correct me if I'm wrong, is it about eight?
Could be that wall right there.
No, sorry, that's eight feet.
Where did you, I couldn't find it on the plan.
Let me find it on the plan.
Eight feet, nine and a half inches.
Well, that's the distance from, from here to here is eight feet, nine inches, right?
It's right on the property line.
Yeah, so your question is, what, the distance from this door to the property line here?
Okay.
Would you say it's about five feet or so? I'm thinking it's, I think it's about five feet.
Does the property line juts in there?
Yeah, can, can you see it here?
Yes.
Sorry, yeah, so it, it's kind of odd. So it comes along here, and it breaks in, and jogs in, it comes across here, and then it jogs back out, and then to the sidewalk.
Abraham.
Yeah. The, can the applicant speak to it, if that's possible?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So what's, what's not shown on this is actually the, the building next door, that property line that Ryan was just pointing to, or whoever had the, you mounted it?
This one?
Yeah, there. His building is actually on that property line. So his building follows that property line, cuts back over along the property line that juts out, and then his building continues straight across.
I think I should go to-
So see that? His building is already on the property line.
Right here?
Yeah. So that edge is right on that property line. And then, once we have that cutback, it follows the front of his building. And then it goes all the way over to our, because we have one parking spot. So the property line that extends out to the street is the edge of our parking spot.
You have a ten-by-twenty space there, parking space?
Yes. So if you go to the right, Ryan-
Between where and where?
Right here.
Ryan, keep going. To the right. Our parking spot goes right there.
When the building that's, when the building that you're in was originally approved, all the parking was on the River View Avenue side.
We actually got this, this was from the approvals from the neighbor. He showed us a site plan, a surveyed site plan.
Yeah, my, my understanding in talking to Richard Emme, who owns this property-
There you go.
Is that, when he purchased this property from, I think the current property owner, I believe, there was a agreement struck between the two parties where he agreed to allow an easement where this, this property owner could have a parking space right here and use that space.
That's nothing that's ever been approved by anybody.
It might have been. According to Richard Emme, he, the plan he showed us was a surveyed plan that showed that spot. He actually dropped it off at our office and showed it, and it's, it had that, it went right to the edge of the parking lot, or spot.
Do you have a recorded deed that shows that?
Um, I'll have to talk to him about it. What he gave, I'll have to see what he gave us.
My concern, my concern was really for you. I want you to understand that. That if Mr. Emme's building were to be destroyed and a new one built similar to yours, you may, may have a very narrow thing with windows and, and doors opening into a very narrow avenue, alleyway. I think the prime example is over, in a couple of the buildings, believe it or not, in Santana Row in Santa Sae, where they don't see any light or air or anything else, but they're mostly professional office-type buildings, and you're, you're going there as a destination. You wouldn't even need a sign to find them, because you know where you're going. Okay. That was my only question.
I have a question about the steel.
Go ahead.
About the steel?
About the steel, yeah. If, if the, the steel plate that we saw is going to be allowed to rust, kind of at will, is that going to run down and stain the sidewalk, or is it going to be caught in a landscaping area and go into the ground? What's going to happen to the rust?
Well, it's right adjacent to the sidewalk. The applicant might be able to speak better to how, do you apply a certain kind of-
So what our plan is, is we're going to, we're going to pre-rust it. We're going to pre-patina it. So we'll, we'll, we spray it with salt water off-site. Once it's rusted, then we seal it. Once it seals, then it doesn't rust anymore.
I see.
We don't have a clear sealer on it. So it actually, it, it looks like the sample we gave you, just slightly darker once it's sealed.
Okay.
But it won't, but then that way, if somebody rubs across it, it won't come off on their clothes.
And the sample you gave us is not sealed.
That's not sealed, no.
I know that.
That one's been just sitting outside, we've been, we didn't actually spray it with salt water yet. It was just kind of sitting, it hasn't rained in a while.
No, I don't want it.
But that's the plan. So we, we'll, we'll seal it.
And it's going to look more like that side, and not that side?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Public portion I closed. Bring it back, what's the pleasure of the planning commission?
Well, I went down and, and drove down, and I agree that it kind of acts like a corner, because it sticks out there. My question was, if the guy next door builds up, he's going to block that one sign. When I went down, Betsy's is another business that's down there in pretty much the same position, and she has a big sign on the, if you're coming down Capitola Avenue, you can see it. And then on the front of hers, she hangs signs in the windows. So she, too, is, you know, needing two signs or a wrap sign. I don't have any problem with having two signs or one sign that wraps in that configuration in that application. And I, I wouldn't have any problem if Betsy came in and said, I want to put another sign on the front where she's got a big star, because it would look really great there. But a question that I didn't think to ask earlier was, have, have we ever denied a sign for anybody in that same kind of a corner building, rather than corner-street application?
In my time here, I don't think we've ever had that situation or had it come up that I can recall.
Well, we did on the corner of Santa Sae Avenue and Capitola Avenue, where Kincaid Gallery and Village Mouse, remember, we made them take down the directional sign to their second little door on the Santa Sae Avenue sign. It was a big finger. It looked exactly like that, plain and stuff. And so we have enforced signs on two sides. We've allowed some signs on two sides, and-
The Villas, didn't we allow it at the Villas?
Villas, yeah, and they never did it, because the guy, the, the application fell through.
That application's really a railroad, there was a railroad track, so-
Right.
We were looking at the railroad track as a street-type corridor.
And, and you know, the sign that you mentioned, the one inside the window, doesn't, doesn't act as a, a sign on the building. It's not like a second sign on a frontage.
Right. But we could do the same, or they could do the same thing in this building with something inside the window and-
And they wouldn't need anything.
Right.
They wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't be mentioned here for us.
But with the rust siding wrapping around that corner, it would, it would look better with it out there than it would in the window, I think. And I apologize, but there's one question that I did mean to ask that I did not ask, and that is the backlighting. Is it LED lighting?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's kind of a backlit LED lighting. So it, I think it's going to have kind of a-
Like a halo effect?
It's kind of a halo effect, that's just kind of shine through that orange, right? Yeah.
Okay. So it's not going to be real bright, and it's not, got it?
No, I think it's supposed to be real subtle.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the signs. I think they're tastefully done.
Yes.
My question that I had about the steel and the rust has been answered with a clear coat on it. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with this project. I'd move approval.
I'd only ask that the conditions include the sealing of the steel.
Okay, I'll have that.
Yep. If I could make a friendly amendment?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on it? I said I'd give you a chance. Do you have any problem with that at all? Okay. I don't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sordid. We, tonight I was told we have no director's report.
Well, I do, I do have one, one thing to, to run by the commission as part of the director's report, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. We recently had a property owner come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your steel back?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, very expensive piece of metal.
The address is thirty-seven ten Dean's Lane. You may recall-
Excuse me, the name of the lane?
It's thirty-seven ten Dean's Lane.
Oh, okay.
So it's right here. It's actually this little home-
Oh, yeah.
Been there for quite a while. It's not listed as historic. The, the property owner recently came in. If you recall, there was a fire there, I think, several months ago. And they're in the process of, of improving the, the home and bringing it back. And one of the questions that they came in with was, they wanted to stucco the house. You know, in general, as a planning staff, you know, if there's a house up on Cliffwood Heights or something, and someone wants to go from a wood siding to stucco or something like that, it's generally, we don't really have much of an issue. It's not something that needs to come before planning commission. But just because of this home in particular, we didn't, we wanted to run it by you guys first, just to see if you had any issues with us allowing it to be stucco. Susan spoke with them, and didn't feel comfortable in approving it over the counter. And so we wanted to run it by the commission and see what your thoughts were, if you'd have any objection to it.
My comment would, I'll make a comment.
Okay.
I know why Steph is concerned, or like why Susan's concerned. We have a gentleman in our community known as Mr. De Tesco, and he did this exact same thing, and he was pulled over the coals by staff for it. So he finally got some stuccling done and the rest of it, but evidently, there's just something in the rules that prohibits it without going through the, the full process and the rest of it. And I just don't like uneven treatment. I'll be honest with you. I'm not siding with Mr. De Tesco at all. I'm just saying that, you know, we got to be consistent.
No, I agree completely.
Brian, have, are you sure that's not in the survey, that little house?
We looked, I looked in both the historic context statement, as well as the, the list of potentially historic structures, and it wasn't listed on there on either of them. So pretty positive that it's over fifty years old, but it wasn't listed as, you know, potentially historic structure. But that being said, that's one of the things we wanted to, you know, we wanted to run it by the commission first, and see what your thoughts were. If, if they, you know, if you feel it's something that needs to come before the planning commission as an application, as a design permit application, then we'll, we'll advise the, the applicant to do that.
I personally would like to see it come before us, because I would like to see, if we're going to allow this, we may get, have an opportunity to get some landscaping plans and some other things here. And this would be a perfect opportunity.
That's a good point.
I, I would agree, because personally, just off the top of my head right now, I find stucco on that little house objectionable. But just because, when you put stucco on a little house like that, it just makes them look like a tacky little box, and I think it really cheapens the appearance. So, yeah, I'd like to see it come before the commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was it.
Okay. Couple of things that we've approved recently, and they've gone on to the city council, and they've approved them also. Has there been a, any communications with the planning staff relative to the farmer's market that was, is being held up at the, the mall? It, I went up there today also, and it seems to be shrinking, and it may be a product that, you know, food products are, that are raised are going away, so the number of vendors is, is smaller. But the area that is being cordoned off included, you know, maybe forty or fifty spaces that were not being used by the vendors or anybody else. Because the vendors tend to park to the south side of the market itself, after they've unloaded and the rest of it. And this, this was on the north side, nearer to the entrance to the mall, and I just wondered if this is, and I'm kind of happy to see that it's really becoming a little more of a farmer's market, rather than a, you know, kind of an outside food court. It, it was like they were scraping really at first to get people to participate, and now it is truly food items or, or produce items, mostly.
Honestly, I haven't, I haven't really heard anything about it. I know a while back that they were starting out, it wasn't going very well, is my understanding. Not many people were showing up. And then I think they switched days, and I want to say Susan brought that before you, just to make sure that was okay to switch days. And I haven't heard anything since. So I can, I can check and see what's going on, but I haven't heard anything since that time.
My one final question for staff. What's the startup date for the new sidewalk signs in the village?
The startup date?
Well, in other words, after we approved it-
Yeah.
It had to go to the coastal commission, and-
Right.
And, and I'm just asking, has there been a date to when, they keep asking, people keep asking all the time-
Yeah.
When are we going to see some of this? And what's happening in the interim is, we're getting a great deal more, you know, you guys did a great job, you did, or whoever did, a great job of placing the signs down there. I can think of the one on Suz's Ice Cream Building, but now it's back up, and-
It's been a joint effort.
All the illegal signs are coming back.
Yeah, Brian, Brian Vanson has been, been great going down there. It's kind of been a joint effort, yeah. My understanding in, in talking with Susan before she left on her trip was that we're applying, I think we've applied to the coastal commission for that amendment. And what I've been told, and we've had quite a few people coming in asking the same, and, you know, assuming the coastal commission approves it, we're looking at probably beginning of the year, probably December or January, before we'd be actually-
Originally, there was-
It would start up.
Originally, there was some kind of thought that November nineteenth, I don't know why I got that in my mind, but was a magic number that somebody was giving them, and I said I hadn't heard a thing.
Yeah, I, I think what Susan has been, her estimation is probably the first of the year.
Okay. As long as you're on signs, one quick one. Does the Dollar Store have a temporary sign permit for all those banners and signs along Forty First?
Well, we're, we're going through that right now. I know they did get a banner permit for the outside banner that's on the wall. What we're having issues with right now, and I'm in discussions with them right now, is the, the window signs that they have on the inside.
Also, they have what, like eight, ten, or twelve?
Those are not, yeah, no, none of those are permitted. None of those are permitted at all. So I think, I know Brian's been out there, you know, he does building inspection as well as, you know, sign enforcement. So my understanding, he's, he's been out there and let them know. I've been talking with them about their sign, signs in the window, which, you know, they ended up, which we're not thrilled with, is the fact that they have actually, their products and their shelving go up against the windows. So you really don't see into the store. So basically, what they have are kind of signage that's on the back of these shelves that show out the window. And I know our, our sign ordinance only allows a- And I know our, our sign ordinance only allows a certain percentage of the window to be covered in sign. So we're kind of going through and determining, you know, how much of those little emblems, dollar sign, and they have little advertisements, you know, what, what percentage of the window is that and can we allow that? So I'm in discussions with them on that right now.
I'll go one more sign. I don't know if you brought it up last time, or who brought it up last time, but what is it called? North Grove Orthopedics was mentioned at our last meeting with regards to landscaping. Well, I'll bring, I'll bring up the concern with the two banner signs. They're on both sides of the building and they are not permanent signs. Are we collecting banner permit money for those?
He...
And who approved them?
We, we approved a banner permit sign for him a long time ago. And he's had them up much longer than...
Six months is the...
Yes. They should be down. He took them down after we sent him a letter, and then he put them back up. The good news is that he, we did issue him a sign permit. So he's putting up, basically, we had approved a, I think the last sign that was up there was, what bank was it? It changed names so many times. Washington Mutual or whatever it was. They had have an approved wall sign on both sides and, you know, internally lit, channel letter signs. And so we issued him a, a sign permit basically to replace those signs. So he's gonna have the same location, same size, same type of sign. And actually, they're attractive looking signs. So we approved that over the counter, and those are being built right now and should be up probably in the next few weeks, is my guess. The other thing he did is he has a, we've, I've been talking to him about the landscaping and letting him know that we've received quite a few complaints about the lack of upkeep on his landscaping. And he has hired a landscape architect and has a plan and is gonna be putting that in hopefully in the next few months.
I was gonna say, there's a good reason not to approve signs over the counter, because we could have probably got some drought tolerant plants put in as part of his sign permit.
A little extortion.
A little extortion, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other things come before the planning commission?
I have one comment back for Steph, and it's feedback on the new software for the iPad. And I don't know, Mick, if you found it more difficult to navigate, but...
From the Dropbox?
Well, just in navigating it from sitting up here, it's, it's, because things are buried now, it get, it takes three punches to get back to the agenda to figure out where we are, as opposed to one punch, which I find that a little laborious. I don't know if there's any way to, to fix it, but the way that it's buried now, I would request that in my packet, I get a hard copy of the agenda, so I can refer to the agenda without having to... I know the public doesn't like to watch us, you know, tap, tap, tap.
I have to scroll all the way back.
No way, really?
Yeah.
Ouch. No, I don't have to do that.
I'm just glad I'm technically challenged, that's all I got to say.
I might recommend, I mean, Larry Laurent, our IT guy, does an amazing job. And I think he could probably answer some of those questions for you better than I can. So what I might recommend is we, I can contact Larry and have him give you a call, and maybe you guys can meet up and, and go over it.
Okay, my last official duty tonight, oh, there's one in the audience. Go ahead, young lady, but you have to come up and use the microphone. You got away with it once, but I don't want it twice, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate the time. Tonight, we spoke about the city's mitigation plan, which means we're, we're preparing for a disaster. And I would like to know, or I believe the city does have a preparedness plan for its citizens. I don't know that that's been shared with the community. But I would also like to encourage the community, everyone as an individual, to prepare themselves. And there are resources available out there through the Red Cross. They can check out the local chapter's website at SCCRedCross.org to find some preparedness materials, as well as Central Fire, their Seventeenth Avenue location. They will be offering a disaster preparedness course that is free to the public. And that will be starting in November. And they can contact the, again, the Seventeenth Avenue Station admin office to find out more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. With nothing else to come before the commission, we are adjourned until November first at seven PM in these chambers.
....................................... Sì, fa bene sì, io getti i frutti di questa cotta, sono rapponesi, guarda guarda, e per te questa cotta dei frutti, trine veluti, tracci maracoli, rison con furi, io gesti strani, tranne reli quei documenti degli amori, cioè i volenti. Quelli raccolti, se già distingue, fai di quel volo. E in quel cartuccio, frutti di anto, bel capo a mare. Il mio sciagro, e dal te lo scuro, quello che strano, e non ho guai. Godi, prendi il regge, tu sciagro. Sì, liberi, ma che decisi? Eh, bel gatto, il mio romanzo, non mi calme voi, mi tiri con il mio nero, se in sede poi mi ha, poi ti vuole, non sa confinie senza gioia, vuoi saperla, la sua filosofia? Run, run, run! Me la voglio, me la faccia di cerno, e non per niente. Run, 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 run! Me la ci manzi, quando è finito il volo, mi vorrei, vorrei.
Oh, guarda la mia vecchia, in arrabi.
Arrabo con gioce, o devo?
Luigi, comari, che carità del ferro, vieni a darsi un affaro.
Padrone. Buona notte a tutti.
Altra cosa.
Corri, l'obria corde, apri forse tuo a voi.
Saresti?
Di te per te levi, che io lasmente sì, di passarle il mio fiano sia, non ti vergogni.
Oh, oh, no, abbevo. Sia fuori la denzieri, arriva il caffè. Se sentevo, non penso, se sente un fullo bricio. Hai tenuto ragione, meglio non pensare, piegare il campo e di purare la fiena. Per noi la vita non ha più valore, e ogni gioia si converte in pena. I sa, finirò mai più la testa terra. Se guardi la rostrata. Il pane lo guardo, ricordare, nell'ora dell'amore va rubata. Va rubata, trascotti miei paure, e suscano le prezza più di fina. Tutto è congeso, tutto c'era pico. La giornata è già buia la mattina. Dai generatore, meglio non pensare, pulire, ma pura la fiera. Eh, qui il mio essenzio, bevi?
Pasta.
Non parlo più, a domani ragazzia state bene.
Ce l'abbiamo che noi, son banco morto.
Ma quando mai potremmo crederla mai tanto? Ma ci riposerei la tua fissazione, la campagna. Ho sognato una casetta, un'ampia l'orticella, ad un amore spento e tenevole, i due fini per un prego, e io devo sedersi al sole.
Ai petti di capo a mare.
Così la morte, che rime io da animale. E il penaldro, il mio sogno, sonata nel forno, mi son aria di panne, mi salgo, mi salgo in nutrisce. Ci metti, in gara, ma tu non sei, questo l'uomo la mia, paga murtio, non si vive il resto, hai resto di forze. Tu ami, sei, sono la mia parola, il suo. Come vettale, lo sai?
Eh, io.
Io, io.
Ma mi dirò ci sonato.
Come me, come me la messo.
Oh, ti ti posso chiamare?
Mi sogno aver provato. Il mio nostro sogno, il nostro amore, noi non possiamo vivere solo, bisogna calpestare il marciavide, lasci un cavo, ci sono vicini, che sposi, leggi e piene confidenze.
Ti conosci tutti, sei tutti una famiglia.
Al mattino il lavoro che ci aspetta, alla sera ritorni in camerina. Quanti che chissà centro, di luci, di lusigne, e dove si imbracciano, dove mi chiedi assosse. Piccole gite in due, al bosco di volaglie, a bagni alla merco, in gita rose. È difficile dire, cosa è via. Questa, questa frutta, non è via. Matina.
Sati il baccio, e il popolo, il tagare, e che mi torna, e mi torna, non ci può stare.
Che no, che no.
Che non vi.
Adesso di, a me.
Se son basse mangiare, che ne dici?
Di un resto? Ora parlare col padrone.
Quando è così, a domani.
Miei vecchi, buona notte.
Ho sognato una casetta, con un piccolo l'orticella, ad un amore spento e tenevole, i due fini per un prego, e io devo sedersi al sole. A me il mio capo a mare, a scelta co' della morte, e i bizi di male.
Luigi, Luigi, ma dove posso dirlo fra un momento? È stato là, lontano.
Perché tu, che nasprisci il tormento, perché mi chiami in mano?
E provata sei tenuto in asena, ai ardori tuoi dolci.
In quei mati tu stai con la tela.
In iuore, iuore, mataci.
Vuole, vuole, la aura ti prende.
Se ci sopri, l'amore.
Per te, mi scatta, mi arreca, e ti pierde, ti dà.
Ah, se fossimo son, non da noi.
E sempre vi.
Luigi, che non mi manca.
Vai!
Che tento?
Ove, non sei andato?
Padrone, buon aspettato. Perché volevo dirgli, quattro panne sole, fingendo ringraziarmi di avermi tenuto, voi volevo pregarmi, se lo potete fare, di portarmi a là, e lascarmi sbarcare.
Allora, ma sei fatto, la lancet'è miseria, ti troveresti pezzo.
Sta bene, allora resto.
Dove vai?
A prepari i lumi.
Buona notte, padrone.
Buona notte.
Digni, perché li acceso di sbarcarti allora?
Perché non posso riviverti da lui.
Hai ragione, è un tormento intimo e sorpresa, vielo sì, che caduti di questa tela. Hai ragione, è un tormento, non doce una pena, ma quando mi presti, e vorrei gravi, vorrei tiro presto.
Parli un mare, insieme qualche cosa alla vita.
Non lo sai, che interessa.
E la gioia, la vita, trascotti nei paure.
E la nostra, nostra, ci ho usato.
Robrira sotto catté, e i baci senza fine.
E il sorpresa.
E i baci senza fine.
Non avete.
Che vuoi noi?
Noi, noi, non fare.
Noi tutti i soli, non fali, allora, e noi.
Oh, non ancora. Digni, ritrogerai più tardi.
Sì, fra ora.
Ascolta, o mieli, lascerò la pastella, sono il mio adoro. Hai gli scarti di cola.
Sì, vai lo stesso segnale.
Il mio affetto, il mio cedo, o mi trillo, il mio abbraccio, mi avete, l'ho vinto, la fiammella, mi pareva, da scendere la terra, fiamma del nostro amore, stella senza ramo.
Io voglio la tua voce, voglio le tue camette.
Dunque, tu lo senti, o le dite.
Voglio che lo dia, vorrei che richieda, come una cosa mira, vorrei proprio, non vorrei, non vorrei, non vorrei, non piace, e per sottrare, tu quel giorno, quello di vino, io te lo giuro, te lo giuro, non a te. Vado a guardare il torcello, che cosa di cotte, di cotte, che capri, capri, che io.
Perché non vai adesso? No, non ancora.
Penso che hai fatto bene a trattenerlo.
Chi mai?
Luigi.
Forse ha fatto male, ma speranno due uomini, non c'è voi, il torcello.
Il tinto potreste influenziale, beve sempre.
Suriata per calmare i suoi dolori, ma per voi è una bagattona, beve per non ucciderlo. Eoi!
Non giude queste storie, che a me non interessano.
Perché, perché non ami più, perché?
Mi sa, mi sa, tu sei vero, ma onesto, ma non mi amo, non mi.
Tu non dormi.
Lo sai perché non dormo, e poi, ma dentro sotto, non posso, ma non posso.
Ora le notti son tanto preste, e lo nostro sole, solo in quell'ardusto, eravamo pure due, e le tue accende a strappi.
Non so, siamo taci, taci.
Tu spartevi la mano, e lo cullo, di dolcemente, lenta, avente, poi sul tratto mio, poter dire.
Non ti credo, che le duri il piede.
Ora, lo spero, come queste, se spita, adrezza, vi raccogli, erbo insieme nel caparro, come in una palezza. Sento sulla mia esporre le vostre teste bianche, sento le vostre balle vicino a noi, abbiamo ora, vedo tanto felice, oh, tanto felice, ora che non eccetto, mi sento, mi sento, mi sento, mi sento, oh, 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 mi sento.
Oh, calmati, mi chiedi, sono stanca, non mi rendo, vieni.
Dai a cogliermi, sai bene che non te, 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 mi fai.
Non ti posso.
Bene, ma so, e voi potete, potete dormi. Resta vicino a me, non chi ti porti, oltre notti, oltre gelie, oltre lune, perché chiudi il tuo cuore, giramenti le ore che volavano via su questa barca, trascinate dall'ombra.
Ora, ricordare, ogni night, ogni.
Oh, ritorna, ritorna come allora, ritorna ancora a me, quanto tu mi ami, e al tempo che mi cerchi, mi facili, quando tu mi amavi, resta vicino a me, la mia bella.
Che vuoi, sin te, via, non son più la stessa, tu pure sei cambiato, difidi, ma che credi?
Non lo so, nemmeno io.
Buona notte, mi chiedi, casco dal sonno.
E allora, ma pure ti raggiungo.